March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and I'm called this Lacey City Council meeting to order. Happy Saint Patrick's Day, everyone, but it's not a happy day everywhere in this world as we are very well aware of. There's a war going on in Ukraine. I've mentioned this before, but we are have a connection to Ukraine. Our sister city in Poland, Minsk, has a sister city and Ukraine. And we've all met up and I've met the mayor and several council members from that sister city in Ukraine. And I just want to know that they're in our hearts, in our prayers. And I would just like to give a moment of silence before the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the republics, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to today's agenda. Is there a?
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that's understood. I did talk to the mayor and one of the council members that we met on our trip. And as of yesterday, they were safe and sound. One's house is completely destroyed, but the family's safe. And so it's a positive, I think. I just wasn't sure if you guys were aware, but I want to make sure you were.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, Councilmember Stedman was with with us on that trip where we met the delegation from Ukraine. And we've stayed in touch, although most of the time you put information into Google Translate. Have to communicate that way, but they were they were really great people and I just it's 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 a tragedy what they're going through right now. But with that, before we get to the approval of today's agenda and consent agenda, I'm gonna make a recommendation. I'm I'm gonna recommend that we pull from today's agenda, the proclamation, the referral from the planning commission. And the ordinance sixteen seventeen, the tree regulations revisions. As this council is very well aware, this has been an issue that we've talked about a couple, several, a couple of different times. But there's a lot of uncertainty from the public on what changes are being made. What's going on? We've received a lot of letters lately. And I really feel, and I know this went to land use, but the land use report is after this. Those two, the ordinance or the referral in in the ordinance. And so it'd be my recommendation that we pull those two items from today's agenda and we put it on a upcoming work session. So we can ask all of our questions there and be fully prepared to to take in the ordinance. And the referral from the planning commission, because I I have a lot of questions and I I know several council members may as well. But is there is there a second to? The motion of a second discussion?
I I agree, Mayor. I think what we need to have more of a conversation before we're ready to to make such a concrete decision. So I would I would concur with what you said.
There are any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hands and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion actually carries. We've changed the agenda to remove our. Referral from the planning commission and the ordinance sixteen seventeen. With that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda?
And move to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Does anyone oppose? Then that motion unanimously carries. We approve the agenda consent agenda items. And then first up, under public recognitions and presentations, is our youth council report. And is, let's bring in Ryan.
I'm sorry, Mayor. It does not look like our youth council member is present.
Okay. Well, hopefully, the youth council member will come in and as soon as soon as the council member comes in, you let us know and we'll we'll get to that report. Then next up is the Timberland Regional Library State of the Library report. And that is Cheryl.
Good evening. Sorry for the delay. Can you all hear me?
You can.
Hey, Cheryl.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder and council members. On behalf of the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees and our staff, thank you for the opportunity to present the twenty twenty-one State of the Library and several twenty twenty-two initiatives. I would like for you to know that your Thurston County trustees are Nicolette Oliver, who is our board president this year, and Mary Beth Harrington, who just recently joined the board at the beginning of this year. Of course, you know Holly Paxson, she is joining us tonight, our Lacey and now Hawks Prairie Library Manager par excellence. You should have received Timberland Regional Library's twenty twenty-one annual report, also available at trl.org, as well as a separate report focusing on Thurston County. Throughout twenty twenty-one, Timberland Regional Library continued to innovate and adapt to changing needs. And staff demonstrated their nimbleness and adaptability to changing circumstances. I want to take this opportunity to thank staff across the district for their continued resilience, collaboration, and can-do-ness. Thank you, Holly, for being here tonight. Throughout twenty twenty-one, our libraries continue to be anchor institutions, playing an essential role in the communities we serve. Here are some of the twenty twenty-one highlights in Thurston County, based on Timberland's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four strategic direction, focusing on local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities. A focus, a strong focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion. And a third focus, empowering children from birth to five, clarifying what they need and how to provide for those needs. So in twenty twenty-one, the Board of Trustees approved the opening of two demonstration Lucky Day libraries. They set aside one point one million dollars from our building fund to do so. Last summer, the West Olympia Timberland Library opened last summer with a two-year lease. And the Hawks Prairie Timberland Library recently opened on February eighteen with a three-year lease. Thank you, Mayor and council members for being there. I was unable to attend, as you know, and Kendra attended in my stead. These two demonstration libraries are what we call internally Lucky Day libraries, where they're all the items in these two libraries are popular bestselling items in different formats for different ages. I would like for you to know that the Lacey Timberland staff are the same staff serving both Lacey Timberland Library and Hawks Prairie Timberland Library. They are essentially one library with two buildings. And patrons have seemed very pleased that they will see that they see familiar faces at the new location. But now for some twenty twenty-one highlights in all the libraries across Thurston, Lewis, Grace Harbor, Pacific, and Mason Counties. Wifi was upgraded at all libraries and at the service center. And that was a big deal because it had been the first time in five years. We also receive a seventy percent e-rate discount from the FCC, getting back about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for for that that kind of reimbursement. We reclassified thirteen thousand picture books into fourteen general themes called the Picture Book City Project, so that toddlers and preschoolers and their caregivers could find new reading adventures more easily. We purchased three new different types of formats for checking out. One is called Vox Books, V O X. Vox Books for Children. These are talking books in English and in Spanish to listen and read along to. No computer, no tablet, or phone is needed. A second is preloaded audiobooks for all ages called Playaways. And then we also purchased Playaway Launchpads. These are launchpads that look like iPads and like a mix of iPads and Etch A Sketches with loaded content focusing on STEM and reading for birth to five. These, this is all new. In addition to that, we continue to offer ongoing baby and toddler and family and bilingual storytimes, all on our YouTube channel, available at trl.org. We added many new online resources. I'm only gonna talk about two tonight. One is called ABC Mouse, which is an early learning ages two through eight resource for reading, math, and science. We have been providing that resource in our libraries for many years. We are now providing it for home access as well for the next two years. And the second one that we added is called Press Reader. So you have access to seven thousand world newspapers and magazines. It includes content from over a hundred and twenty countries in sixty different languages. So you may ask, you know, how are we able to set aside the one point one million and and stay within sixty-eight percent of our budget with staffing levels? While at the same time, only having a one percent increase in our revenue per year? Well, we did a lot of work and we purchased automated materials handling equipment. Eighty thousand dollars of that equipment is installed at the Lacey Timberland Library. Another eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment is installed at the Olympia Timberland Library. And then a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment at our headquarters. This has allowed staff to focus on the patron and not necessarily focus on the circulation of the physical items. We also have during the pandemic introduced story trails installed in all the five counties in partnership with cities and counties and hospitals and ports. And the one in Lacey just ended on March fifteenth. It was at the Meridian Neighborhood Park. And Holly tells me that Lacey staff are currently planning a story trail for this summer, site yet to be determined. And all of our twenty-nine libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five county region, serving the job seeker and the small business owner. I have been appointed by the county commissioners to serve as a PAC Mountain Board member. And this is I'm filling my second three-year term and leading the one-stop committee that oversees work source for the five county region. So now I want to share some statistics for twenty in twenty twenty-one. Physical checkouts for the entire county increased by fifty-seven percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. That is the highest of any county, and that's physical items. And then in terms of overdrive, which is where you go to download your eBooks, e-audiobooks, and now your three thousand e-magazines, that increased by fourteen percent. Specifically in Lacey, there are sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty active library patrons, of whom around fifteen thousand are North Thurston School Districts, sorry, North Thurston Public School students with a MyTRL program, where each student K to twelve has an E-number in their Skyward account. In twenty twenty-one, active Lacey library patrons checked out close to three hundred and ninety-six thousand items and downloaded three hundred and twenty-one thousand items from overdrive. So now I'm at the point where I'm gonna talk about just one or two major initiatives in twenty twenty-two. Beginning January first, we had we readjusted and have new open hours for Thurston County because of the opening in West Olympia and the opening of Hawks Prairie. We went from two hundred and twenty-eight hours in twenty twenty to three hundred and thirty hours for patrons across library users' residence across the county to access their public libraries. Lacey alone, the Lacey Timberland Library went from forty-nine to fifty-four hours. And of course, Hawks Prairie has forty-three hours open. And then the other libraries also increased. And I wanted to also share with you that we are boosting the outdoor wireless access points so that people can continue to access our wifi. We've always been able to, but we need to boost it. It's available six AM to midnight, seven days a week. So I want to end by sharing a quote that paints the picture of what Timberland has provided to people, especially in the past two years. "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. There are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island or on a cold rainy city of Lacey, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer but a citizen instead." Thank you.
Thank you. I love that. That's absolutely correct, too.
I love that quote. Love that quote.
So good. Good seeing you, Holly. Keep up the great work. So I still don't see Ryan Hill, our Lacey Youth Council member. So we'll go to a public comment on items not on the agenda. We didn't receive anyone signed up for pre-registered to speak today, but we did receive four public comments that are emailed to the council. And all four of those, I think, as we pointed out, were members of our community bringing input about the tree ordinance, which is another reason why I suggested that we take that to a work session. So next up after that, on our agenda is proclamations. So hopefully everyone's ready to go with that, and I will get started. The city of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas in times of crisis, people in Lacey come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is a part of our of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by Red American Cross volunteers and donors. Then?
Whereas in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And?
Whereas today, more than a hundred and forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Lacey who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And?
Whereas in Lacey, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their doctor's hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires. And?
Whereas donating essential blood and blood for burn, it's hard to agree, organ transplant agents. Those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, reticul cell disorder. And?
Whereas the Red Cross sponsors the Heroes Cafe, event held in our own Lacey Veteran Service Hub, which provides vital resources for veterans as well as active-duty military throughout the Thurston County. And?
Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of founder Clara Barton.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-two as American Red Cross Month in the City of Lacey and encourage all citizens of Lacey to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And I know the Red Cross is doing some great work over in Ukraine right now. And I'm not sure if anyone's been watching the series. Uh in Ukraine right now and not sure if anyone's been watching the series uh on, I think, I'm not sure if it's on HBO, but I've been watching it where it's talking about Clara. Barton starting the American Red Cross. And so this is really, really timely. I'll I'll turn it over to you, Daniel.
Uh thank you, Mayor Ryder, and thank you, uh council members. Um I I I have to express my my awe and appreciation. Uh for each of you uh taking a part in reading uh the proclamation. Um I really, really enjoyed uh seeing that and uh seeing the collaboration. Uh that that exists within your team. Um I'm joined here uh today by a local Lacey resident and uh Red Cross uh the South Puget Sound and Olympics Board Member, uh Justin Mears. Um he's also the owner of the uh local Chick-fil-A. Uh so I'll pass it over to Justin for a few words and then um and then wrap it up.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Um and thanks. Um Mayor and then the rest of the council for uh for being willing to to declare March um Red Cross Month here in Lacey and. Um you know, I I think that for me, I'm only in my second year being on the board, but just seeing the work that that Dan and the rest of the Red Cross um. You know, the majority being volunteers do uh i- i- in our local community and the things that they're able to respond to. Um and you know, you mentioned Ukraine, yes, the international work, but also, you know, just in our local community, what we're able to to do and accomplish because of. People willing to donate blood and volunteer. Um. It it's critical uh to to our ability to 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 do those things and respond to crises that do pop up, you know, whether it's wildfires or floods and all that stuff. You know, we've been present at those things um over the last, you know, year or two, just in my time on the the board. And so. Um it's it's a big deal. And so being willing to make that proclamation and and provide some exposure to. Uh our local chapter uh of of the American Red Cross is is really huge for us uh here and in Thurston County and just uh I'm just grateful and thankful. For your willingness to do so. So thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Justin. I know uh you're a busy man uh running that very busy Chick-fil-A location. So thanks for giving us a few minutes of uh of your time and. And thank you as well for your um volunteer work with the board. So.
And Mayor, before Justin go. Uh I just, you know, I I want Justin to know there's several business owners on this council. And that, you know, his time, like, like Daniel saying, is the most busy person. And we appreciate him being a part of the community. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I'm happy to take any questions uh that y'all might have.
No, I just I just want to thank both of you um for the work you do. You know, it's. When um people are are in their darkest hour, right, that you you hope you see some sort of light. Um and the Red Cross has been providing that light for for a very long time. And uh you know, this is near and dear to my heart. The First Lady, the my my wife was. Uh board member on the Red Cross as as well um in years past. So. Uh keep up the good work. Uh keep helping those community members that that need it. And for people who are listening, now's the time to give blood and support your American Red Cross. It's more important than ever.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may add a second real quick. Just real quick, um I know a lot of vets that are retired that volunteered for for the Red Cross, and it's another way of them giving back to. You know, serving, if you will, in a different capacity. So that's healing for them, too, you know. So they get to help people and and uh, you know, they get um to feel good about it and. And be a part of the community as well. So thanks, Daniel. It's awesome.
So uh before we go on to our our next agenda, I am, I I do see Ryan Hill is here. And so let's go back and um get that uh Lacey Youth Council report.
Hi, I'm so sorry for my tardiness. I was struggling with the link, but I'm here now. So. I'm very excited to tell you guys all about the Youth Council. We were at the Cultural Festival at Saint Martin's this past weekend, and we are super excited to keep. Uh plugging away on our now in-person and virtual work. So we had our first in-person meeting this week. And we're continuing to work forward with our summit project in the spring and. Um this following Wednesday, we're working with the. Women's League of Voters to train to register young voters within our community, and that's a super exciting program for us. So. That is what I have for all of you.
Great. Thank you. Keep up the good work. I'm glad you could finally get to meet in person. You know, I just, I'll report a little about this uh. Under the mayor's report, I I just got back from Washington DC and. Lo and behold, there's uh several youth councils uh that are attending that conference. And it was at that uh. Fall conference um and back and way back in two thousand ten that I first saw the the first youth council associated with the city. Um and really loved the idea and wanted to bring it back to the City of Lacey. And so I'm uh seeing all the youth councils uh there in DC. I'm I'm hoping maybe, maybe next year in DC you guys will be coming with us. So um keep up the good work. Uh good seeing you. So uh next, under uh ordinances is ordinance number sixteen eighteen, the Lake Lois Pacific Avenue Annexation. And hopefully Ryan is available.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me one second to be able to share my screen. Okay, so tonight in front of you, you have an annexation for your consideration um in an ordinance form. Uh so it's the final consideration of the the Lake Lois Pacific Avenue Annexation. Uh this annexation was city-initiated. Uh the city initiated the petition uh for. Uh the area that you see on your screen here, including Lake Lois and between Carpenter Road and Kenwood Street. Uh the annexation was processed, sent to the boundary view board. Uh they declined their jurisdiction, and so now now it comes back to the council for consideration in ordinance form. So the the area proposed for annexation is located in the Tanglewild Thompson Place Planning Area within the Lacey Urban Growth Area. As you can see on the screen in front of you, the area in purple is uh the urban growth area, the unincorporated urban growth area. Um that's considered for annexation, uh generally located east of Carpenter Road, west of Kenwood Street. So this would extend the city boundary out to Kenwood, uh north of the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail and south of the Aldia Glan subdivision. Uh the area is approximately ninety-five acres in sixty-three separate tax parcels. With an assessed valuation of a little bit more than fifteen million dollars. The City of Lacey has initiated the annexation on behalf of those parcels within the annexation area where the city holds power of attorney agreements. As well as for those parcels which the city owns. Uh supported note that eleven parcels are owned by the City of Lacey. Um and another four parcels are churches, which are exempt from the payment of property taxes. Here's an aerial photograph. Um the the and the annexation area is a mixture of undeveloped property, critical areas and buffers and low-density residential uses. As I mentioned, this includes the eastern portion of Lake Lois, which isn't isn't actually a lake, but a a designated wetland. Um which makes up the headwaters of Woodland Creek. Uh these areas are largely owned by the City of Lacey as part of the Lake Lois Park and Habitat Pres- Preserve. Uh another wetland known as Goose Pond, which is the kind of bright green. Uh oval that you can see south of Pacific Avenue on the screen there uh is uh also owned by the City of Lacey. Uh the area contains about forty-six dwelling units and an estimated population of about a hundred people. Here's the zoning for the annexation area. It's a mixture of zoning districts, including. Uh low-density residential, moderate-density residential, um on the eastern ed- edge of the annexation area along Kenwood Street. Um and open space institutional uh for Lake Lois and the other environmentally sensitive properties. One more map to show you here, which is the um extent of the power of attorney agreements that we do hold. Uh so it it is extending into an area where we do. Do hold several power of attorney agreements, and those are the areas that are in pink. Um as well as city properties, as I mentioned, those are the properties that are in green. And we actually own now another property, the Sprout Property, which is south of Pacific Avenue uh where where Goose Pond is located. Stop sharing now. So um just a quick overview of some other elements. Uh it's located within the City of Lacey's water service area, and there is water service. Uh to serve the the area as well as a sewer. Sewer is limited, though, to the area a- along the eastern boundary of. The annexation area along Kenwood Street. There are a couple, I wanted to mention a couple of things about governmental services. So obviously, when we annex property, we provide those governmental services that are currently being provided by Thurston County. Couple noteworthy service changes will be to police service. Uh there's information in your staff report about. Um the number of calls per year. It's not a significant increase um for this area. There's also information in your staff report related to uh the assumption of the uh infrastructure, especially public streets in the area and what that will will entail. I did want to make mention of one kind of unique item about the annexation, which is uh Thurston County made us aware that they have obtained a federal grant. To repave and make uh Americans with Disabilities Act improvements to Pacific Avenue. Uh between the current city limits. Um so in front of like the senior center um down to Union Mills Road. Uh the county has agreed to move forward with the project and and lead that even if this annexation goes through in in the city. Um with the understanding that the City of Lacey would pay back uh our proportionate share of the match. Um our estimate is that match for that that grant would be about eighty-seven thousand dollars. So not not a lot of money, especially given that this would make some significant upgrades into that. Area. Project is anticipated to start in August of twenty twenty-three. And we will need a specific agreement with Thurston County on how this will be handled. It's quite likely, though, that there may not be any uh grant match necessary. And that we would be paid for by a hundred percent of um of the grant, but that is yet to be worked out. Uh we did hold in a public informational forum back on November seventeenth of twenty twenty-one to provide more information to residents on how the annexation would affect. Their taxes and the change in services. Uh the event was recorded and is available on the City of Lacey's YouTube channel. Um as as well, just a reminder upon annexation, uh the city is required to conduct a a door-to-door census of the area. Um an accurate census makes sure that we are um in line with our our state. Uh our our share of our our population-based uh revenue that comes from the state. Finally, um as I mentioned, the ordinance that's in front of you tonight, um one thing that's noteworthy in the ordinance is that it does delay the. Effective date of the annexation to June first of twenty twenty-two. Uh the reason for that is to allow for more time uh for that transition of services to occur. So if by approving it tonight, it would not yet be effective until June one of twenty twenty-two to give the city some additional time to kind of catch up. So with that, uh happy to turn it over to you for um your consideration.
Uh I would make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen eighteen to approve. The Lake Lois Pacific Avenue A- Annexation. Effective date of annexation, June first, twenty twenty-two. To allow orderly bu- uh trans- transition to city services.
Second.
And move the second discussion.
I had a quick question for Ryan. Um I I didn't see it in the reading. So on the map, it shows the the new borderline just goes just a little bit beyond the the road of Kenwood. Does that mean we're now we're going to be responsible for both sides? Or is that is that what that's intended to to show?
Yeah. So we have an annexation agreement with Thurston County that states when we uh do annexations, we're required to uh. Basically bring into the city limits all fronting right-of-way associated with the annexation. So. The the annexation boundary on the east end on Kenwood Street would actually extend to the the eastern right-of-way boundary of of Kenwood in that location. Um and the reason is, is that, yeah, you're right, that we would pick up the the maintenance responsibilities associated with with that street. So it it makes for a more kind of orderly transition. So we're not, you know, leaving a boundary short of a of a street or something like that.
So I just uh want to put some historical context uh to this annexation. Uh when I was first elected to this council over twelve years ago. Um we first uh council retreat, and at that council retreat. I was uh talking about the, I would like to see the city more adamant about uh annexations. Um that we have, we have the largest urban growth area of either the cities in Thurston County. And I use this area in particular about an area that um didn't make sense at all for it to be uh in our UGA any longer. Um and so it sort of warms my heart to see at all these years later, this annexation finally going through. And uh another really, I think, important part of this is um. There's a a couple that that live in this annexation area that are some of the two most influential people in in our region. Uh Nat Jackson and Dr. Thelma Jackson uh you know, have had tremendous influence. In in our area for a very, 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 very long time. Um Dr. Thelma Jackson is the Chair of our Commission on Equity. Uh long, you know, was a long time. Um on on the Puck School Board. Um and has had a huge influence um in our community, same with Nat Jackson. And there was a time. Way back when, where they were against maybe coming into City Lacey. And now they want to be in the City of Lacey. And I think that also shows you how far we've come as a community as well. So. It's uh sort of warms my heart that uh we we are finally having this kind of this area come into the city. It's it's been long overdue and that we've had the support of the the residents in this area as well. With that, is there any other discussion?
Now, now the jump rope king is is a Lacey resident. See that?
Now he's a Lacey resident. Yeah, absolutely.
I I did. Question. Um I remember Ryan saying about a hundred people where the Jacksons live. But the overall annexation, what is that about the the thousand, maybe?
No, I think that's the whole area. It's not, there's not a lot. Yeah, there's not a ton of people that live in through in through this area. It does come up a little bit farther and it goes over, but. But a lot of this has been city-owned for a long, long time, for a long, long, long time. Um and so and of course, there's a church and some other thing, but that that hundred sounds about right for that entire area.
Well, I would say, you know, the Jacksons, uh the same with the Hills and the and the Bettys. Um you know, they they all uh in and want to be part of Lacey. So that's, you know, come a long way and it's, you know. Their their support for small businesses and stuff, it's it's awesome. It means the city's going in the right direction.
Absolutely. Is there any discussion? Then it's been moving second to uh optus ordered sixteen eighteen. And that will have a uh effective date of June first, twenty twenty-two. All in favor of that motion, signified by saying I. And that motion unanimously carries. Thanks, Ryan. So um next up, under the mayor's report, let's first go to um my recommendation that we reappoint Sarah Daniels. To the Board of Parks Commissions. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And move the second. Um I think Sarah might be with us. She's she with us?
Yes, she'll be joining momentarily.
I see you're in the part.
Good.
Yep. Hey, Sarah, do you want to just uh talk about why you want to have another term?
Let me see if I can get my picture on. Hold on. There we go. Hello. Uh good evening, Mayor Ryder. Nice to see you and city council members. Always a pleasure. Um just taking this opportunity to say hello and have an opportunity to connect. Um I'm very interested in continuing on the Parks uh Board. I think since moving to Lacey in twenty fourteen, um I was searching for a volunteer opportunity and. This has exceeded my hopes and expectations. It's been a very positive experience in terms of feeling connected to the community and learning. Uh a lot about the community. I think especially these past couple of years during COVID. I mean, I hate to sound like a broken record, but it's it's. Sincere and genuine and real. I think that the parks. Uh and programs that were able to be continued online with such Herculean efforts by staff. Um I think it it's just been even more meaningful to um to serve in this capacity when parks play such an important role. In our sort of psychological juggling of all the negative. Um stressors and confinement, all the issues that come with confinement. Uh I'm also, to end on a positive note, just. Stressors and confinement, all the issues that come with confinement. I'm also, to end on a positive note, just extremely excited to continue because I'm very interested in. Being in the development phase of the Greg Cuyo Park and really look forward to watching that development and hoping that we can get the surrounding neighborhoods to embrace it as well. Know they had some concerns as anyone would when their, you know, comfort zone is going to be disrupted, but it's such an amazing opportunity for the community at large. As a whole and such a wonderful property to be able to make available for people to enjoy appropriately and in so many different ways. Anyway, so some of the reasons why I just really enjoy, also want to thank the city council again, mentioned it when we had our work session, but really excited to have a larger. Membership that our council is now seven and then also our student member, youth representative. But it's just exciting to have additional input and representation and diversity on the board. So want to thank you for considering me and I look forward to another three year term.
Thank you, Sarah. You've been an amazing addition and we're very lucky to have you. So it's really, it's my honor to be able to reappoint you and then have the second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye. Is there anyone to post? You've been unanimously reappointed, Sarah.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Take care.
Thank you. So next up on the mayor's report, and I I alluded to this a little bit earlier, I I just got back from the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC and. Had a chance to meet with our our federal lobbyist Joel and his group and be able to reach out and talk about some of the City of Lacey priorities. It was a it was a really informative conference like it like there always is. It's interesting because this is the first time in four years I've been off the Board of Directors. So usually it's like morning to night, I'm just, I'm nonstop going. I could take a couple breaths this time around, but it was still a busy conference. And I think it's worth noting real quick. How how much has changed even since the last year with the bipartisan infrastructure bill? That was that was passed and what that really means to cities and towns and the City of Lacey. There is, we got an update from our current transportation or secretary, Pete Bushedge, and he really. Pointed out all the different programs that have been created under this legislation and there are very many. Let's, you know, and the the cities that are going to be the most successful in applying for these now competitive grants. Are the cities that are going to have the expertise in applying for the grants. And so it makes a lot of sense and I think we need to have this conversation as a council that we hire someone specifically. That starts looking at our our grant programs, not, you know, for sort of citywide. You can see more and more this competitive grant program and Lacey has been very successful over the years, been able to apply for state grants. Federal grants, you know, we sort of count on some help. I I really think we need a full time person. Scott, you. I know you've talked a little bit about this, you know, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I I think there's two issues. One, you're right, the transportation, there is a significant amount of revenue and cities will benefit if they understand the new rules. And so we are preparing, we're College Street Quarter would be one of those. And right now we're depending on consultants to give us that expertise, but. As you know, there's the state legislature that also put a lot of money in affordable housing. There's also stuff with the federal legislation and we do, I need a larger scope of discussion about. How do we best leverage those dollars for our community? So that could be a future discussion with council.
Maybe, maybe it's, I know there's a bunch going on on our our upcoming work sessions, but I think maybe we need to have a little more in depth conversation about that. Because it became very apparent, even though there's, we try to be a streamlined application process, the winners or losers are the ones that are taking advantage of all these programs and research the programs. We do have some help from our our federal lobbyists, but then you have to find sign, find someone to apply for the grants and everything else. And so. So that, so there's that, the other interesting information that came out of this is, you know, we received American Recovery Act plan dollars and we've been told. That no hurry, we have until twenty twenty six to to obligate, you know, spend these funds. However. Congress has already tried to retract some of those funds to pay for different programs. And we've, even the experts thought that was going to take a couple of years before Congress was going to, you know, start looking at unspent funds and pull some of them back. What what this is telling us is we better obligate those American, those ARPA funds sooner than later. Or we're going to be at risk of losing those funds. And so I know we've had some conversations about we want to have this go to permanent support of housing. I think after this conference and even talking to our our congressional delegation, they were able to stop it. Some of our congressional delegation was able to stop, stop that from happening. But I'm sort of feeling like we, man, we better obligate those funds sooner than later where we are at risk of of losing them. So that that's really important information. Another part of the the infrastructure package was a a grant program that under the infrastructure bill wasn't funded, but was a part of it. Was the subject to sewer conversions. And so obviously, we have a a robust program that we have put on the backs of our. Sir, you know, our our utility customers to convert subject to sewer in the City of Lacey. Boy, it should be nice to replace that with federal funds. And there was an opportunity for that to happen. I I brought it up to our federal delegation. Can you please fund that? Because we're we're trying to do our part, but it'd be nice to have some federal help on that. And so that was another piece that when I was back there, I was sort of lobbying on on behalf of Lacey. And then there's a Outdoors for All Act that really is would support cities to improve their unapproved parks. Well, I can think of a major park that's unapproved that we can use some federal funding for that as well, as long as the majority of our, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of parks that are unapproved. And so it was a sort of busy as always NLC conference. It was good. It was sore surreal. It was the first conference being back in front of people after two years, but it was it was good. And I I do encourage, you know, this council to get involved in NLC. Hopefully several of us will be there in the fall. And will have more than just myself advocating on behalf of Lacey interests. And that's my report. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So a couple of items on the agenda. Also, I need to report out on a interlocal agreement that we recently signed. The first up though is a bid award for the Terry Cargill Reservoir and Puna Clark is going to provide that information.
Oh, good evening. So let me share my screen.
Yep, we see it.
Okay. So Honorable Mayor and City Council members. For the Terry Cargo Reservoir, city staff recommends award for the Terry Cargo Reservoir to the low bidder. Phoenix Fabricator and Erectors with the low bid of eight million, four hundred fifty six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety seven cents. The engineer's estimate for the project was eleven million, one hundred and ninety nine thousand, seventy eight dollars and forty three cents. The project had two bidders. The project has four hundred and eighty working days and we will begin work in May. We will be constructing a one point two five million gallon composite elevated tank. The project is located at forty five oh four B in Telco Loop here in Lacey. And we are doing work constructing a new tank with associated site utilities and stormwater improvements. It will include a new sixteen inch diameter water main. With a proposed tank to the existing water main in Intelco Loop, which is south of the tank site. It'll also include new telemetry and skater controls for the tank and onsite detention pond and landscaping. So here I've provided a project location map. So the site map on the left shows a zoomed in photo with the red square. Showing the undeveloped site and our site is just west of the Lacey's Jacob Smith House. Just north of Intelco Loop. And the map here on the right hand side shows the project site with the red star just west of College Street and north of Yom Highway. Here you can see a example of the reservoir that we will be constructing. Again, it's one point two five million gallons. We are doing construction from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. I've included a project rendering of our completed project showing the project tank, our stormwater detention pond, as well as our landscaping. So I'm going to stop sharing unless you would like to keep looking at the rendering.
No, go ahead and stop sharing.
I'll take any questions that you have.
I'd make a motion to award Lacey contract number PNW two thousand nineteen dash thirty two, the low bidder Phoenix Fabricators and Rectors LLC from Avon, Indiana. In the amount of eight million, four hundred fifty six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety seven cents.
And move in second discussion. A councilor said.
It's just an educated guess that the winning bid was from Phoenix, even, but it says Phoenix, but it's, I mean, Indiana because it said I am so, but the second. Bid, where were they at of? Usually we have a city and and state or whatever for the contracts. Do you know?
I think, I think that's always. Important question, because since we only had two bidders, are are we really comfortable with just the the two bidders? I guess it's the other big, big question.
I I am because the engineer's estimate was eleven million, one hundred nine thousand, which both bids are lower than that. So. One's lower by almost three million, two and a half.
What what what's your recommendation? Are you feeling comfortable with the two bids?
Yes, so we we are comfortable with the two bids and we are comfortable with the apparent low bidder, which is Phoenix. I talked to our design engineer consultant firm, which is Murray Smith, and they are also comfortable with our our low apparent bidder, Phoenix.
Councilor Vasquez.
I was just curious what, when in two thousand twenty four you anticipate completion of the project? I see that you anticipate four hundred and eighty days for the work, but. Do we think toward the beginning of twenty twenty four or toward the end?
It will likely be towards the end.
Deputy Mayor. So I just want to be clear about, okay, the design here is to to increase our our water capacity so that we so we can continue future development in this area? Or is this just kind of to to infill, you know, the missing pieces of 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 our of our system where we're, or we're running short? Or I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, because I I know that there are a lot of the areas undeveloped. And and it 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 appears as though it has, you know, a lot of potential for future development. Is that, is that what we're looking to?
That's a good question. We've been, this council has been talking about this for for quite a long time, but you have to remember there's new council members on this. So you want to explain why we're doing this? What reservoir?
So we are doing this project to increase storage capacity as well as to increase fire flow in this pressure zone, which is the three thirty seven pressure zone. There are multiple pressure zones and that's the two reasons that we're mainly doing this project. Yeah, and it is, so this project is part of the city's water comp plan. And it was, so it, we're doing, we're also completing that project for that reason.
Any other questions? Councilor Seven?
So I served on the board of the Lacey Corporate Center for many years, was a vice president, I think, totally in about seven or eight years. They have really strict covenants and compliances, CCNRs and bylaws and et cetera, especially when it comes to multi housing or or stuff like that. This, I'm sure you guys, did you do diligence, you know, architectural wise? You know, I just need to make sure knowing that I'm, because I'm have a property out there as well. So I just want to make sure, and I'm sure the city did their diligence, like I'm saying, that this is, everything's good to go and plans are ready to break ground and all that.
Yes, I looked at the CCNIs.
Mayor, and for that reason, I'm not going to vote on this, so.
I'm like, that's, I know we've had this conversation before, if there's a conflict of interest, Dave, is there a conflict of interest for for Councilor Seven to vote, be voting on this? Likely not, but if council member Stedman is more comfortable abstaining, perfectly appropriate. Okay, I know he does have properties out there that's going to benefit from this, so I I agree, you can, you can recuse yourself.
I'll do that unless we have a tie or something like that.
Councilor Cox.
Thank you. Looking at your rendering and kind of knowing the area pretty well. It looks, looks as if this tower is going to be towering from a hillside that's going to really change the look of that area. Is there, and unlike the one that's being introduced, the sister stand out on North Marvin. Which is, has, you know, a tree, trees along there that sort of block some of the view of it. Is there anything in the plan to kind of soften?
Yeah, I mean, I may jump in there. We actually, this is something that this council has discussed before too about, do we, do we paint this? Do we do some art out there? And we looked at some of the costs and it was going to be quite expensive to to do that. And we've seen a couple of different renderings of what it would look like with it not, no art, not. Isn't that correct?
Yes, and then to, if you're wondering about adding trees, so the trees in the area are. Will be removed, right, to make way for the trees, for the reservoir. The trees in back of me are the trees that are currently there. But we are removing some and then they will grow higher as the the trees mature. But we won't, you know, currently put tall trees. At. At the planting time.
Well, I remember, right, is we're going to construct this, we're going to see how it, how much it really sticks out. And then we'll make a recommendation from there on if we need to add some art or something else to help it blend in. But it's one of those things where we kind of have to get built. You know, and and we, we had a conversations like, do we do the, we try to do something with it from the get go and have it be a part of this bid or do we wait? And this council did decide that we're going to, we're going to wait and see what it looks like first.
Yes, we we represented several iterations of different artwork, mural type artwork on there as well as you can add. Additions to the reservoir to make it blend in more and the utilities committee decided to wait for several years down the road. And the utilities committee decided to um wait for several years down the road. Um when it needed aesthetic changes.
Yeah, part of the, part of the reason Carolyn was because the, the cost of the artwork was, it was pretty steep. And then the maintenance was going to cost us a lot every year too, so over a five-year period, we were looking at like four hundred thousand dollars. To paint the side of this thing.
Yeah, so I guess what, we're gonna hope for the best and see what it looks like, and we'll come back and make decisions, especially if people out there are really complaining about it. So far, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Are there, are there any other, any other questions?
One last thing, Mayor, the, the, Robin was ahead of me though.
I just had a quick question for members of the public who may be watching. Can you give us a real quick summary of what a pressure zone is? Cuz this is in pressure zone three thirty-seven, but that might be Greek to a lot of folks.
Yes, so there, uh, a pressure zone is um. Uh how high, it's like, we have different pressure zones in the city and um. The water, the outlet for where the water escapes or the water outlet for the pipe. Of the reservoir is located at a certain level and that's where it is located, and so we. To, if, if it's lower than the, the water pressure doesn't work as well, is the easiest way to describe it.
And so in some, and especially out there, the wire pressures are as high as it needs to be for, especially for fire flow. For hydrants and stuff like that, so.
That sounds like putting this in is also gonna increase pressure to pipes that didn't get a lot of pressure before, which reduces how much we have to clean them. And it's also gonna serve lots that were previously only served by septic, so this is a good thing.
Is the, is, is the capital city stuff that we just annexed, is that not seeing pressures of?
That's pretty close.
I think, I think it might be, I'd have to check.
Is there any other special?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to recognize Terry Cargill, you know, a big fan of his, he worked for the city, I believe, over forty years, uh four decades and. He knows the city inside and out and, you know, um, yeah, I wish we had a space needle we could name after him or something like that, but every time. Uh someone goes a hook into the, the fire hydrant and, and save lives that way, God forbid it ever happens. Um, you know, Terry will be attached to lifesaving measures and so that, I guess that's good enough, means we don't have.
This is a mini space needle. It's shaped kind of like a space needle.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that the. It's, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? To approve the uh bid to the low bidder, uh signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion, yeah, it carries. Thanks, everyone. We have two more.
Another bid, bid award for lift station twelve abandonment, and Jason Kishani is gonna provide that background information.
Sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yep, yes.
And see me?
Now we can, we know.
All right, good evening, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, council members. Uh if you give me just one second, I'll pop up my presentation here. Unfortunately, it's not as impressive as Puna's project, but uh. I've got uh lift station twelve abandonment, um. Sorry, Saint Patrick, or happy Saint Patrick's Day to everyone too, um. Staff recommends award of Lacy contract number PW twenty twenty-one sixteen to uh low bidder North. Aid Incorporated from Tacoma in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, uh seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eleven cents. There were uh six bidders on this project, um they came in just below the engineer's estimate of seven hundred ninety-three thousand. Eight hundred seventy-two dollars and four cents. Uh we have a lot of working days and expect to begin work in May. So lift station twelve was originally constructed in nineteen eighty, so it's basically exceeded its lifestyle or life cycle. Left expectancy, um and now it requires excessive maintenance to keep it in service. The project will construct a new gravity to redirect flow from the abandoned lift station and connect it to a downstream manhole. The conversion of the lift station to a gravity system will save on construction costs as well as operations and maintenance costs. The project will provide a new sewer system to multifamily units that are currently being served by septic. I've got a pretty map that shows the area. Uh just north of the annexation Ryan was talking about a little bit earlier, it's a southeast uh corner of. Um the intersection of Martin Way and Carpenter in between Kenwood and Carpenter. And I've got a project site map that kind of zoomed in and show, shows you the area, project limits. Uh where lift station twelve is uh with that star, uh and. We're constructing a new gravity main that flows downstream, so you see it in the red. And connects one gravity system to another gravity system, and it just allows us to eliminate the, the pump station. Which like, so. Reached its life expectancy or beyond its life expectancy. And as you can see, I've got some pictures of the site here, it's kind of a cramped space for a lift station and it's not quite up to. Lift station or City of Lacy Lift Station standards, uh so we were fortunate enough to be able to. End the path through a few properties by acqui- acquiring some easements and we're able to divert that flow to a downstream manhole. That will um actually benefit um have so many advantages to the project. So uh I've got some pictures here to kind of show the lift station, it's a vacuum primed lift station. Uh that goes there, pumps sit on top of the wet well. And inside the wet well, we've got some deterioration and, and the crews are out there uh maintaining this thing almost weekly. Uh just making sure that it uh keeps uh serving the residents in the area. Until we actually are able to abandon the system. So with that, if you guys have any questions, um I'd be happy to.
You stop sharing your screen? Can I give a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I could move that we award the Lacy contract number PW twenty twenty-one sixteen to Low Bitter Northwest Cascades. Inc. from Tacoma, Washington in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Second, moving second, is there any discretion? See none? I'll impair that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you to Lift Station Twelve for your many years of service.
So we now have a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lacey and Saint Martin's University for the purchase of property. Uh related to a future police station. I know Rick Walk will be here, but also Ashley Smith provides some background and context. And also Chief Almoda.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh Scott, and uh, yes, tonight, uh, we have a proposal for you, a recommendation. To authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lacey and Saint Martin's uh Abbey for the purchase of a. Eleven point nine six acres for the construction and operation of a police station. And as the council is aware, uh, we identified, well, back in twenty nineteen, the need for upgrading our, our police station and, and expanding. If we meet the uh, the staffing demands and the service demands that's bringing apart, apart from our growing community. And so through this effort, there was a uh, a study conducted that looked at best options for that expansion and identified. This uh, just under twelve acres of St. Abby's property as a, as a um suitable location. So we went and approached Saint Martin's Abbey and we had a series of meetings with the uh, prior Nicholas and Andrew. Uh Hoyer, who are representatives of Saint Martin's Abbey, to talk about the purchase of a property, their willingness, and then negotiate some um. Uh design standards and framework for what that potential purchase could look like. And results of that discussions is the MOU that's part of your packet tonight that lists out all those different terms. Um, we presented this MOU to the council at a work session uh on February tenth. At that work session, uh prior Nicholas, as well as Andrew, were there and, and answered council's questions. So again, what this MOU does, it sets up the, the terms as well as the process for the uh city to move forward. With uh working on the, the police station project and to purchase that property for the appraised value of um. Four million and forty thousand dollars. So with that, we have Ashley here as well as Chief Almoda to answer any detailed questions you have on the process, the project or the uh citizen advisory group process. That is beginning to get underway to review this uh police station proposal.
Yeah, kind of a motion.
Yeah, I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Saint Martin's Abbey for the property purchase.
We moved and seconded, got that second, any discussion?
Go ahead, just real quick, so I, I, I understood, I, I, I read it and it is a very amicable deal, it looks good, everything like that, I didn't understand that. So if we have to fence off the, the eastern border. Right, and is, is that what it said? And then if it went one, if, if that fence needs to be moved for whatever reason, for access or whatever, they. They decide to develop in the future, then we need to do that at our expense, is that, did I get that?
That is, that is correct, and, and the reason for the fencing is there will be a, a uh secondary emergency access only. Uh driveway that will send off of Baron Drive uh along the east side of the current city hall campus into this property. And uh, uh, when we construct this, that the proper location for that gate and fencing would be closer to Baron Drive. Now, in the event that the Abbey may ever develop that property to the east of us, to the east of Sea Hall Campus. They will need to have access and access to utilities, and so if that ever did occur, then we would remove that gate, secure gate and fencing back. To allow them to access that adjacent property.
Okay, and then, and it, uh, the last thing was, so we're stubbing out um utilities to, to, to the, to that border or just to the, the facility?
Councillor Mayor, uh Miller, if I may, we are not stubbing out utilities at this time, we're going to appropriately size utilities to. Serve the adjacent parcel parcels should they decide to develop there. Um but we would stub those out and make improvements to the access road at that time.
Okay, so, and, and that means to Baron Drive?
Yeah, it would be, so the, the access road runs north-south and it would be off of the access road to the east. Kind of pointing towards where those, this city stormwater facility is. The, the, the connection to serve the police station will connect um off of Baron Drive, Sixth Avenue.
Got it, I can't imagine anything's gonna be developed from the other side since the stormwater is so close there.
There's not a lot of available property there, but we did want to leave their options open, as did they.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second to approve this uh memorandum of understanding between the St. Lacey and St. Martin's Abbey. All those in favor of that motion is in the fight by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion, yeah, it carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. So uh council, and on a positive note, um as per resolution ten sixty-seven, any interlocal agreement that's signed under twenty-five thousand, the city manager has the authority. We entered into an interlocal agreement between Department of College and the city for three thousand dollars to assist with the homeless encampment that is. On the DOE property off of Martin. I'd like to share some success, um as soon as we signed that agreement. We were able to relocate one of the encampers into uh an apartment complex cuz they could not afford first and last rent, so that's where that three thousand dollars was utilized for. So that was a great work for the CRU team, the MOT team, MOT team, as well as Rick and the chief and. Everyone trying to find better outcomes for the people that, uh, you know, do not have shelter, so that was a, a great partnership and success story with the state.
Thank you.
And just maybe one uh direction from council, I know you mentioned about wanting to move the tree preservation uh or tree regulations revisions. Um, we probably could do that next Thursday, if that is council's desire, and work session on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Then we're on to uh boards, commission, community reports, I think uh, uh the finance committee um actually is up first. Which met on February twenty-second. Um, and just like that, we're relooking at twenty twenty-two budget amendments, um and there are several that have been already identified. Uh, we've talked uh to this council a couple of times about the workforce uh that we need to add. Um, and human resources and finance and finance, uh pay for payroll and accounting and finance for department assistant. Um, we're gonna. Do some Lacy Action Service hub, computers and peer lab furnitures, those. Of course, the regional climate mitigation plan, there's a whole host of them that's out um in this report. And including uh the Parks and Space Fund for the Great Cuyo Park uh Greenway Match Plan. Uh phase one A design cost, which we already have. On, uh, ready to go, so, um, also with the joint animal services to increase Thursday County Services level resulting in a budget increase. So there's several um budget amendments that's in this report. Um, the other thing that we discussed was our twenty twenty-one budget carryovers, so just like we budget every year and you, you think you're gonna get through your budget. And hopefully spend your entire budget, but sometimes you get to the end and you have to carryovers. Um, when you do have to, when, when there's unspent funds uh from one calendar to the next, you still have to authorize that to be spent in the next year. And so um that's what this was talking about, that all the unspent, unspent funds from twenty twenty-one that we are authorizing to continue to spend. In twenty twenty-two, and so there's a, there's a list of that, and with that, I will go to um the land use committee.
Land use committee, uh had a one item agenda on its last meeting, and that was the revisions to. Lacy Municipal Code fourteen thirty-two for tree permit exemptions uh that we were. Going to deal with tonight, but we'll move, move that a little bit down the road. So the proposed permit language contained. In, in the LMC would still allow for in- individual lots to be exempt from land clearing. Permit requirements, provided the tree density minimums of four trees per five thousand square feet are maintained. Either with the number of trees retained on site or through replanting to meet the minimum, minimum ratio. This would still allow for typical tree removals to receive over the counter permits for, for the removals. The only additional requirement would be for requests of more than five trees to be removed on a lot. For those requests, the applicant must have a tree report completed by the city's arborist. Uh, the report would allow the arborist to provide additional field education and outreach while. Also assessing the individual site and surroundings.
Thank you for that report, and I'm sure we'll discuss that a little bit more at uh next week's work session, so we can ask some questions at that point. Um, next up is the community relations and public affairs committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So our community relations uh committee met March seventh. And Kelly Adams presented the uh new city website draft and provided preview and updates to the progress. The utility of the site is uh very much improved with easier ways of navigating for public use. The next step is to finalize the content with department team. And we also received an update from Jen Burbage on the Parks, Culture and Rec website. Uh, the projected date for our new website to go live for the City of Lacey is the end of this month. And I just wanna take a moment and personally give kudos to everybody that was involved in the design, uh this update. We all know is long overdue, and I was very impressed with uh the utility of the new design on the website. I'm sure the public will be appreciated as well once it goes live, and that is my committee report.
Thank you, now we're on to boards, commissions and committee reports. Um, I'm up first, the only uh. Thing I'm reporting out on today is the transportation policy board, which met on March ninth. Um, right in early morning at seven AM like we always do. Um there's a couple of different items on the agenda. Uh one of the items we talked about was a household travel survey update. And I'm sure I'll be taking the deputy mayor's thunder, because that was also given to TRPC, it was a big part of the fair report. So I'll let you, I'll let the deputy mayor's uh talk, or no, it's actually Robbins now is the TRPC representative, right? But correct. So sorry about that. And so I know that the TRPC um was was informed on the household travel survey as well. Um and so it's just basically a big survey that went out, that's big, going to be going out to. Talk about how, you know, people are using her public transportation and so on, so so on, so forth. So um I'm counting on that uh council council member Vasquez is also reporting out that. The other thing that we had um talked about was the state uh fiscal year, the the twenty twenty three, the unified work program. Which is uh uh we we reviewed the draft of that. Um and got some some feedback from transportation policy board. Basically, it looks at the TRPC's priority transportation work for the upcoming year. Um and then we talked about recruitment for our business and uh community representatives. And with that, um I'll go to the deputy mayor.
Uh I don't have a report this week. Well, just one small thing, the the Thurston County Coalition Against Trapping was supposed to have their uh annual community conversation. Tonight it got canceled, uh and I will update you as soon as there is a new date in place.
Yeah, your customer talks.
Lady, reporting out on the March ninth meeting of the Lot Clean Water Alliance. Um kind of exciting, you you may recall former deputy mayor Pratt reporting on. Um biological process improvements there designed to minimize the. Or total organic nitrogen that is actually released into the sound. And they're running two new, what's called process trains now, and they have literally been able to cut. The uh total organic nitrogen by half going in there. So that is, that is a very positive step there. Um there's, I think I may have mentioned this previously, but there is um some scoping work being done on. Trying to establish a regional tech- technical training center. Uh and this would be to um, I mean, lots interested in this, in this is. Wanting to grab kids, you know, in high school who may be interested in careers in. In that line of work. I've advocated for um, excuse me, for um drinking water um training as well. Because as we all know, um you know, we have an aging workforce that we need to recruit more people into. So uh stay tuned for that. Um. Let's see, um there was a report on Lot's status of emergency response. And there are new pro newer protocols that kick in before periods of heavy rain now. And so during the heavy January rain event that resulted in flooding in the in the region here. They were able to avoid having to bypass treatment before water is released into the to the sound. So. That was a very good thing. And then finally, you may recall that um Matt Cannelli. Accompanied um Mike Strube at our workshop, our work session last time. And the lot board approved Matt as the successor to Mike Strube. Who is expected to retire in somewhere between September and November. And this is part of a very um intense succession planning program that Lot has that identifies. Staff and gives them up to like three years of training so that they can step in when the person whose. Job they are going to take uh does actually retire. And they've just successfully done that with the new operations manager, and now with Matt stepping in as the new director. And that's my report.
Thank you. Greenstein.
So Thurston County Medic One EMS met on uh March sixteenth. Couple of things from that meeting, uh we held elections for the uh chair and vice chair. Stan Moon was reelected as chair, and I was reelected as vice chair. We also looked at an amendment to our bylaws to make those positions two-year positions rather than one that was uh passed unanimously by the board. Uh the biggest thing, most important thing of the of the meeting was we are going to present the county commission at their meeting. Next week, I believe it is, with a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar amendment to our budget. Um which is unheard of for us, we've never had that big of an amendment. But it is a basically a result of inflation and labor contracts. So the way Medic One pays paramedics is the paramedics are employees of the three bigger fire agencies, Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water. And Medic One pays eighty percent of those paramedic salaries. Well, we have nothing to do with nor involved in the negotiation of the salaries, that's the between the districts and their and their unions. Um some of them are taking very large increases this year in their labor contracts. Uh Lacey uh Fire Department is taking seven percent cola this year, so it's significant. That has a significant impact, obviously, on Medic One's budget because we pay eighty percent of that of those paramedics. So between that and just the the rising cost of everything, uh fuel is a big factor. Two, a year and a half, two years ago, we were paying about seventy five cents a mile to run the medic vehicles. We're at about a dollar and a quarter a mile now. Now, to run those vehicles. So that's the reason for the amendment request. By doing that amendment request now in the March amendment cycle, that would make it part of our baseline for the following year. Which is the reason we're we're approaching the commission this at this early time in the year, so. And that is my report.
Inflation, inflation, understandable. Uh Councilor Stedman. No report. Uh Councilor Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have uh two reports to give today. Uh Jazzcom met March seventh. It was a fairly brief meeting, discussion items were mainly revenue and fundraising. Uh we're open to new ideas for methods of financial support. You know, we currently have several nonprofit groups that do support animal services. Uh but the nine hundred pound elephant in the room, however, is the need for either a newer improved facility. Uh to meet expectations of our community. Uh in the director's report, there is still some maintenance going on after the newer improvements in the current facility. And we also covered the implementation of our strategic plan of increasing accessibility and enhanced community involvement with outreach efforts. Presentations are being done at various venues to bring awareness to the importance of animal services and the need for uh community support. And Sarah Hawke, our executive director, will be presenting to our Thurston Multiple Listening Sales Association. Uh where I sit on the leadership board for that on March twenty ninth. And looking forward to seeing her then. Uh the uh VCD board met March fifteenth. Some of the key highlights were in the scorecard metrics for Experience Olympia and Beyond. January's occupancy rate was on par with two thousand nineteen at fifty seven percent. And our occupancy goal for the year is fifty eight percent. With the end of Governor Ennis' mandates, we should be able to meet or exceed that goal. Uh unique website visits for tourism are definitely outperforming uh twenty twenty one. And with anticipated COVID recovery, improved web interface in March, we should see. A twenty five percent improvement to our site usage from the previous year. As more people will be traveling in Washington State. Uh our sales team is ramping up promotion efforts in the most three important categories of travel, which is meeting, sports and touring. And we're already aware of more sporting events locally uh reconvening this year uh locally. So to summarize, we are in a good mode uh for improved ability to track and anticipate our key performance indicators. Uh with the added utility to make tourism easier in Thurston County, uh while we continue to promote reasons to visit here. And that is my report.
Thank you. Uh Councilor Vasquez.
Um couple of reports. So I was not able to attend the inner city transit authority meeting yesterday, but I did review the agenda and got kind of an update. One thing they shared is that. Um they offer a van pool program, and it's been moderately successful, but they've recently embarked on a. Effort to simplify the pricing structure, so they took their two thousand different price points. Program down to about eight price points. And so that makes it a lot more attractive to participate in the van pool program where you can predict how much it will cost to participate. They're anticipating that a lot of folks will start wanting to van pool as offices reopen and the pricing structure is so much simpler to understand. So that was a neat thing that they shared. We approached the thirty fifth annual bicycle commuter challenge, and they're proposing to change the name of it. From Bicycle Commuter Challenge to Bicycle Community Challenge. With the onset of the pandemic, they actually started counting every ride because they were just trying to encourage folks to get outside and ride bikes. So instead of just giving people credit for riding their bike to work, they're encouraging folks to ride their bike to the store, ride their bike to the park with kids. And so that's an exciting change, just encouraging folks starting in May to ride your bike everywhere and log your trips. Um for the ORCA meeting that happened recently, the big news is that they plan on starting conversations around the strategic plan. The last effort toward reviewing their strategic plan for ORCA was back in two thousand eighteen, but they want to with the. Onboarding of the new director, they want to have a strategic plan for what that agency is going to be focusing on over the next five years. With the TRPC, um among other things, they identified Hillary Seidel, who's a member of the Olympia School Board, as the chair for TRPC. We saw presentations from three different jurisdictions, including Lacey. Rick was there presenting on housing attainability and affordability, and we heard a lot about how Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water are working to address housing affordability. And just mitigating the lack of affordable housing options in the county. It was really interesting to hear that although the cities of Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water are in slightly different places in terms of accessibility for housing. A lot of us are trying the same things, right? The cities are applying similar policies with varying degrees of success. So trying to incentivize, offer tax exemptions, encourage local nonprofits to assist or give in the game, offering affordable housing units. We're all kind of applying the same policy mechanisms. And so we're hoping to continue to push that kind of as a county to see more affordable housing units become available in the future. Uh they also talked about smart quarters, which I think I presented on or reported out on last time, but. It's harrowingly complicated to get all the systems to talk to each other. So that buses don't have to wait a long time at stoplights, and we can improve traffic flow and get people where they need to go faster and reduce carbon emissions. So they continue to work on that, and it's moving in the right direction, but it is super complicated. So thank you to the folks at TRPC that are working on that. Finally, um and Mayor, you wanted me to report out on something specific, but they are working on um kind of reviewing. Applications for grants from the federal government. Is that it?
Uh no, it's all right, there's a household.
How they review those.
And I thought they reported out to TRPC as well, but that's all right.
Well, they they did do a study, they deployed a TRPC sponsored study that they do every year to try to figure out. Who's traveling and how they're traveling, how many trips they're making. Yeah, and so they did share some of the outcomes of that. The reports have been shared with the individual employers that sponsored that survey. And they use that information to figure out how they can. Support employers and support people who live in the community to. Drive less or to access bus services or encourage bicycling, or just reduce the distance that people have to travel in a single occupancy vehicle. So I know that my agency received our report, and it's going to help us kind of support and encourage our CTR efforts over the next year.
Yep, that's it.
That's my report.
Great, well, thank, thank you for reporting out on that. Um well, that means that we're at the end of our agenda, and as I I mentioned at the top, happy Saint Patrick's Day to everyone. I know I'm waiting for a dinner that Rick Nelson has made, and I'm probably cold by now, but I'm on my way or their buddy. And I'm sure everyone else ate without me, but until then, you know, keep calm, let the writer handle it. You keep classy, Lacey, I'll see you next time.